It says.
Fairwise, yeah.
Seven o'clock.
Is Jay ready to go? You ready? Okay. Good evening, welcome to the study session of the Albion City Council, Thursday, January 11th, 2018. If you have an electronic device or a phone, I ask you to place it on silent. I call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Reed.
Brown.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you observe proper decorum, and this is for agenda items or agenda item only. Are there any public comments this evening on the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed to the item for individual discussion, item A, interactive presentation regarding council manager form of government led by Attorney Scott Smith. So...
While we're waiting for the PowerPoint to load up, and if you were asking me to do it, I couldn't, so I'm not... I'm admiring anybody who's making an effort to do that. Let me tell you a little bit about me. I'm a member of the law firm of Dickinson Wright. It's a firm of nearly 500 attorneys with 19 offices across the country, including five in the state of Michigan. The firm has a strong municipal and municipal finance practice. I've been practicing law since 1980, and I do only municipal and municipal-related work. I'm general counsel for seven communities, serve as counsel for the McCord County Board of Commissioners, and I'm regular outside counsel for Grand Rapids in Wyoming. I've been working with Grand Rapids since the mid-'80s, doing special projects, and I've worked as special counsel for a number of other communities, North Muskegon and Manistee, Constantine, Greenville, and a number of others. I've worked on a fair amount of legislation, Uniform Condemnation Procedures Act amendments, the Brownfield Act amendments. I was part of the Lieutenant Governor's Task Force, working on personal property tax. I was one of the subgroup that drafted all of that, all of those bills. And I'm currently providing input to the legislature on the tax increment financing, consolidation legislation, the small cell bill, and short-term rental bills. Not that they're listening, but I'm providing some input. Obviously, not all I do is law. I'm an avid bicyclist. A number of years ago, I rode from Sault Ste. Marie to Panama City, Florida. So, that gives you an idea of what I like to do in spare time. I've been married 36 years, two sons, both of whom married up. I have two grandsons, and both daughters-in-law are now expecting one at the end of May and one June 10, one with triplets. So, I will...
They're not competing.
No, but I will by sometime in June have six grandkids under two. So, just... Obviously, since I practiced since 1980 in municipal work, I've seen a lot in municipal circles. I have seen council members turn to the camera and make campaign speeches. I saw one commissioner stand up, pick up a pitcher of water, walk down to the other end of the dais, pour it over another commissioner, and said, "That'll cool you I watched one commissioner tell another, "Let's go outside and settle this like men." I've seen orchestrated demonstrations. I saw a student group come in and orchestrate a demonstration, and at the end of which, they all laid down and refused to leave. So, the mayor simply adjourned the meeting. So, I've seen, you know, I've seen a lot of things over the years. I've attended more council and commission and planning commission and zoning board feels and other meetings than anybody wants to count. I'd like to talk tonight with you as a dialogue, not a monologue. The slides that you have lay out some things that I want to talk about. Feel free to interrupt. This is your time, not mine. If, I won't be bashful, if you're asking a question or making a comment that we're going to get to later on, I'll tell you that, and just tell you if you'll wait patiently, we'll get to that. Otherwise, this is your time. Now, in preparation for this, I went through your city charter. I went through your rules. I went through the chapter of the city code that has to do with city manager task, and as a result of a question I got last week, I've looked at the National Civic League's model charter, and a number of you sent me questions, and I've looked at all of those. In the questions you sent me, there were a number of things that I concluded. First of all, all questions were good questions. They were thoughtful. They were well-prepared. Secondly, all the questions and the explanations given with them indicate that all of you are engaged in trying to improve the community. You may have differing ideas on what that looks like or how to get there, but you all are interested in improving the community. You, there are a number of common inquiries, most of which are addressed in the presentation. So, the common inquiry are the roles, duties, and powers of the manager and mayor and council. What are areas, what about questions that the charter isn't clear on, and there were examples of what happens between meetings, what, who sets the vision, and other kinds of things. There were questions about how the mayor, council, and manager should interact, how to hold the manager accountable, what codes of conduct or ethics apply to various people at various positions, how can we clarify or better define these relationships, responsibilities, and powers. There was, there were questions asked about the charter and whether it's time for an amendment or revision, or other kinds of things, and we'll get to all of those. So, I will give you specific answers to all of those questions. If I fail to do that, let me know. And in the absence of the PowerPoint coming up on the screen, why don't you turn to your books? This is one good reason why we have handouts. So, if you go to tab two, I will go through the slides in the order you have them, and unfortunately, the slides also correspond to page numbers and the outline that follows. The outline's a little more detailed and cites specifically two parts of your charter and parts of your rules and so forth. So, you may want to turn to that later, or try to be looking at both at the same time. In fact, maybe... I may have enough so that you could have the outline open at the same time as the slides, and that may help. All the council members get in first. Actually, don't have an outline. Goes right to roles and responsibilities. There is no... Oh, there it is. Back into that section. Yeah, it's under tab one. That's the outline. No, it's the same, but you can have the outline and the slide go at the same time. That may be helpful to you. If you go to the second slide, the context for city government, and I'm aware that you've been through a lot of this before, so I'm just going to highlight it. You know that the United States Constitution reserves certain rights to the states. You know that under the Michigan 1963 Constitution, that there's a home rule preserved for cities and villages, and you also know that a home rule was intended to limit city government or state government. As a practical matter, it's not worked out that way. You also know that the legislature, at least the current trend, seems to limit city government. So, for example, areas of zoning with adult foster care homes and group homes, taxation and public debt are areas where you only have the powers that are expressly given to you by law. So, you can't, for example, levy a sales tax because you don't have authority to do that. In other cases, you have incidental and implied powers, but not with respect to those kinds of things. You know that more recently, the legislature's limited local control for residency requirements for city officers, if employees, and employees' gun control, wetlands, private employment issues, you can't set prevailing wage, or other kinds of things, and so forth.
First question, just curious, and I'm sure the city has authority to switch to a single hauler system with...
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
For refuse.
Yes.
Yes. And, in fact, there are a number of cities that have done that. I've got clients that have single hauler systems where they set up the contract, and that's what people have to use. You're aware that you're losing control over rights-of-way with the Metro Act and the small cell bill that's currently pending, and, you know, a number of other things. Now, the council manager form of government, if you go to slide three. There are several types of local government. You've got a town hall government, and a town hall government kind of approach is what townships use. And if you look at the townships, particularly those in the Northeast, they have, everything is done by having the, all of the electors into a meeting, and it's done by a show of hands, and everything's done by community. There's a commission form of government, and that is where the administrative and legislative functions are in the same body. So, counties, for the most part, are commission forms of government. The county board of commissioners, not only does the policy setting, but it also oversees a lot of the implementation and administration of those policies, the exceptions being Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb County, which have county executives, and they're set up more like state government. There's a council manager form of government, so, or there's a strong mayor form of government. So, Detroit, Lansing, and Chicago all have strong mayor forms of government, and that's where the mayor provides the administrative and executive duties, and the commission then is wholly legislative. You've got a council manager form of government, where the manager's the chief administrative officer, the council's the legislative body or policymaker, and the mayor is a presiding officer in the council. Now, Albion's a council manager form of government. How do we know that? Well, the city manager is, by your city charter, designated the chief administrative officer. The mayor, by your city charter, is a voting member and presiding officer of the council, and the council is called the policymaking and legislative body. So, it clearly fits within the council manager form of government. The city manager, if you go to the next slide, serves at the pleasure of the city council. The city manager administers and supervises administrative departments, administers the annual budget, prepares and administers the annual budget, prepares with the clerk the agendas, and attends council meetings, recommends the adoption of measures that the manager deems necessary, enforces ordinances, and the charter provides some fairly broad responsibilities and powers to the manager. Now, all good managers understand that they're accountable to the community, the voters and the taxpayers, through their elected representatives, the council. All good managers know that they advise the council, and they recommend to the council matters, but then it's up to the council to debate and decide what the policy's going to be. Managers implement the council policies. They run day-to-day operations of the city. The manager serves as the connection between the council and the staff, and we'll get in just a moment or two how that ideally works in a council manager form of government. The manager is the administrative face of the city. So, part of the manager's job is to represent to you the staff's viewpoint on various issues, and part of the manager's job is to communicate to staff the council's viewpoint on various issues. I note that your rules allow council members to have items placed on the agenda, and there's a procedure for doing that. The mayor, if you go to the next slide, is the ceremonial head of the city. He's the chief executive officer. He has an equal voice and duty to vote as a council member. He's the presiding officer of the council. He advises the council on the public affairs of the city. He generally appoints with council consent members of boards and bodies, and the mayor, under state law, has certain emergency powers. So, if there's a local emergency to be declared, or certain local emergency actions to be taken, the mayor would do that. Are you missing the PowerPoint? Yeah, was that for a moment? So, some will ask then, how is the mayor to lead? In fact, a number of your questions asked how a mayor is to lead under that kind of situation. How can a mayor be accountable to the electorate? First of all, importantly, the mayor is one council member, so the mayor has an equal vote with you all. The mayor is generally the designated spokesperson for the council. Now, importantly, the mayor's the spokesperson for the council and for a majority of the council, and speaks to the community about that. The mayor is the person who has the task under a mayor man, or under a council manager form of government to coalesce the views of the other council members toward consensus. The mayor should do the vote counting. The mayor should be the one who, in interactions on a weekly basis, or even in some cases, a daily basis, with the city manager, will be reflecting what the mayor thinks the council view is on things, and helping the city also reflect to other council members what the city manager is telling them. The mayor should be the face of the city to other governments, businesses, citizens, and the media, and so forth, on a lot of issues. The mayor should be advising the council on city affairs, to the extent that the mayor has knowledge of that, that the rest of the council doesn't. And the mayor will be interacting more with people in the community, because the mayor, it is the person who's the ceremonial head of the city, and appears at a lot of those kinds of occasions, the mayor is the spokesperson. So, the mayor will have more opportunities for feedback than other council The mayor's, let's see if I can get caught up here. Okay. The mayor's chief roles. The mayor is to lead the council. He should handle the council and community politics so that the manager can stay out of politics. Okay? It's the mayor's job to try to coalesce you, to understand what your various viewpoints are, and to interact with the manager, and to help the manager avoid politics. In fact, the International City Management Association Code of Ethics indicates that managers are to stay out of politics and not favor one council member over another, and not favor one viewpoint over another, and so forth. And that only works when the mayor, mayor pro temp, and other council members are doing their job. The mayor is to conduct meetings in an orderly way so that they're safe for a robust discussion of issues, of issues, not people. Okay?
So, I do...
Go ahead.
I've been asking questions all night. So, I have one question. So, and this is a hypothetical. So, let's say I became aware of a, you know, a large stakeholder institution in the community was having a trustee meeting, and I sent out an invite to the chair of that board and said, "Hey, let's meet. Wanted to pick your brain, see what the direction your organization's going, give a sense of what, you know, there's the needs that I see that the community has," but without, obviously without giving any guarantees of, you know, a policy outcome, or a council vote, or anything like that, just saying, "These are the things I see. These are opportunities where there are potential partnerships." Does that, does that fit within the, I guess, the charter language that says, you know, basically, keep myself abreast of public affairs, and to present that back to council? Is that, you know, as long as I'm not promising a policy outcome, is that within the bounds?
Yes, it's within the bounds of the charter. Now, how does that practically work in best practices? You and the manager would have dialogue about that. You and the manager may go together, because there may be things from a policy perspective that you need to inform council about. There may also be things from an operational perspective that the manager needs to know. So, let's take that example and flesh that out a little bit. So, you go to that meeting, and one question that comes up is, when is the council going to address the horrible roads in the city, if that's the case?
Ouch.
Or when, what, what's, or the more poignant one that I heard about was, M.D. really goofed up on that project, right?
I didn't say that.
So, what's the council going to do about that? That's a good policy question to lay on the mayor's lap. If, on the other hand, the question is, "Look, I've got some questions about the priority of your snow plowing." That's a manager question, right? Because that's an operational issue, and the manager needs to be aware of that. That's not for the mayor to address, and you'll see in hypotheticals later on that we'll get to that. So, ideally, the mayor and manager are interacting together with those large community stakeholders so that you both have appropriate input.
Excellent.
Okay? Part of the mayor's job is to protect staff, and at times, other council members, from abuses by the public and others. So, if you're conducting the meeting, for example, mayor, and somebody from the public comes up and wants to single out a staff member, and turns to them and starts berating the staff member, or whether it's a police officer, or a snowplow driver, or a parks employee, part of your job would be to protect it and to make these meetings a safe place for the kind of discussion that needs to occur. You ought to be able to talk about policies and have vehement disagreements about policies. In fact, if you don't have disagreements about policies from time to time, then you're probably not reflecting the views of the community as fully as you ought to. But you can have those kinds of disagreements and talk about the policies without making it personal. Now, that's easy for a lawyer to say, right? Because we do that all the time. We go head-to-head with somebody and have vehement arguments, then we'll all go have a drink together. So, but that's how it ought to be. Now, the council. The council acts as a body. Individual council members have no authority. So, you're aware that in Chicago, altermen have some individual authority within their district. They have a certain amount of resources that they can spend for the benefit of their district, and they have a lot of discretion in that. The altermen have their own staffs, and so forth. Here, that's not the case. You act as a body, and you act through your ordinances, resolutions, and motions. You make policy. You appoint the manager and city attorney. You adopt budgets, levy taxes, and approve borrowing. You approve contracts. As a legislative body, you adopt laws. That's what the ordinances are. So, if we look at your situation, the city charter really is your city constitution. It acts in the same way as the state constitution does, and your ordinances are laws, because they tell people outside of city government what they can do and can't do, and hold them accountable for that. And you fulfill other duties provided by law. So, how do you do policymaking? Well, ordinances and resolutions certainly are policy, right? They reflect the policy of the city. Ordinances are sometimes required by state law. Ordinances are required if you're imposing a penalty. Ordinances are generally required if you're trying to exercise control over persons outside of state, of city government. Resolutions are also required, sometimes by state law. So, you've got some of your, some of the municipal bonding laws, the statutes that the state adopts, require that you adopt the bond ordinance. Some of them require that you adopt a bond resolution. It just depends on what state law says. You also make policy through your budget, through the levying of taxes, and through borrowing. So, you make policy when you establish budget priorities and budget certain amounts to certain things. That effectively makes policy. You make policy when you approve contracts, because you're approving contracts to undertake some projects and to spend municipal resources in some ways, but that excludes doing it in other kinds of ways. You make policy by your appointments, because you may appoint people with certain viewpoints to certain bodies. You make policies when you do some goal-setting and expect reporting from and feedback, give feedback to the city manager. So, your annual goal-setting session, if you're adopting concrete goals, you're setting policy, the policy agenda for the year. And if you are expecting reporting from the city manager as to what the staff's doing to implement those policies, you're also doing policymaking, because you're monitoring the progress of that. Now, policymaking's limited by law. As I said, the taxation, borrowing, zoning are examples where you only have certain authority. Some subjects are beyond local control, so you can't control international relations. You can't... You can't can enter into treaties. You can't control FEMA hurricane response, right? So, those are beyond your control. You can't use city funds and resources to support or oppose particular candidates or ballot proposals. You can't spend city money for any private purpose or for any public purpose except as provided by law. Now, as an aside, you need to regularly establish concrete measurable goals for the city manager and city staff. And I say measurable because it can't be things like improve the roads. Okay? How do you know whether that's been successful or not? You can say, adopt or enter into contracts, come up with plans to do this segment of road, or you can do, like some communities have said, and do a thousand linear feet of sidewalk this year. You can come up with specific kinds of things that are easily measurable to determine whether you're getting the results that you want. Okay, your council rules of procedure.
Do you look at old ones or new ones?
I looked at the new ones. A number of people sent me the new ones. The council members address comments to the mayor and stay on topic. Personal comments or attacks are out of order. You've got a number of excellent rules for conducting the city's business meetings. The rules indicate you recognize the purpose of meetings is to address city business. They indicate you wish everyone to have an opportunity to participate in policymaking so you have limitations on the number of times a council member can speak and the duration of some of those comments in order to give everyone a chance. You indicate in, by your rules, the public has a right to petition elected representatives, but not to use council meetings for improper purposes or to try to take over a council member's roles. Now, I've seen, I saw a meeting up north once where they were talking about special assessments, and somebody out of the audience actually came up, grabbed the microphone, and refused to give it back to the village council members and proceeded to whip up the audience. So, your rules prevent that kind of thing from happening. The mayor's role then here is to make sure everyone stays within those recognized boundaries. Note that under your charter, the city manager is to be able to speak on all policy discussions. The city manager simply doesn't have a vote, but has a right to speak during that policy discussion.
I do have a question. So, something-
I anticipated. There would be a question on this issue.
So, with public comment, a lot of times persons will get up and say, "Hey, my street has not been maintained to-"
Yes.
You know, over decades. And they stand and say, "Hey, I want an answer." And so, from your experience with other communities, is it, I guess, in your opinion, what's the best practice to handle that? Should we allow citizens just to have comments and then not to address them? Because there are some times where there are things that are, there are clearly factual answers we can give, definitive, and other things we'd have to consult with the manager and staff about, so.
So, my advice generally is, first of all, you look at the purpose of the public comment portion of the meeting. And the purpose of that is for the general public to be able to petition their local government and to come before you and express concerns, grievances, whatever they may have. I advise against entering into a debate or making any kind of response. Allow the public to say whatever they want. Say, "Thank you for your comments. We'll refer those to the city manager. We've taken down your name and contact information. The city manager or another city staff member will get back to you if it's that kind of comment." If it's a comment where somebody in the public is misrepresenting the facts, I still advise you just to say, "Thank you for your comments." After the public comment section is closed, then you can turn to the city manager and say, "There were a couple of public comments here I'm a little confused about because they don't, the facts as related during some of those comments aren't consistent with what I understand the facts to be." And then allow the manager or a staff member or another council member or somebody else to clarify at that point. But I urge you not to enter into a debate because you can't win those debates. I don't know if there are other thoughts on that. Now, you also prohibit public applause and cheering is out of order, and you require handouts to be submitted ahead of time. You know, you really, in terms of your rules for public comment, have some ideal kinds of rules from my perspective. Same thing with limiting comments to three minutes. That's helpful, I think. You can always relax that if somebody has more to say or they're representing a group of people. You can always alter that, but that's a, that's a good rule of thumb.
Councilmember French.
And we have, thank you, Mayor. And we have relaxed the rules on applause. Like when people are retiring, we read conversations at the beginning or-
But that's applause for a job well done. Those are kudos for people. That's appropriate. Applause for a particular policy expression is inappropriate. Right? You don't want people to get in the middle of your debate. All right, open government. The Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act were post-Watergate laws intended to prevent secretive government. They were written in the mid-1970s. And I remember when they came out, I was between college and law school at the time and wrote the first FOIA policy for the Michigan Secretary of State's office. So, you know, I can remember a lot of the dialogue at the time about how this was going to ruin the ability to do government. Part of the problem with these laws is although there have been tweaks and updates to clarify some provisions, there have been no tweaks or updates to address 21st century electronic communications. So, we have a law that worked pretty well, for example, when agenda packets were all printed off by Memegraph or Ditto or the single-page copy machine, because that's what it was back in the mid-'70s. And then they were hand-delivered by police officers in the afternoon, on the afternoon shift, right? That's how it always used to be done.
We still-
But, but at that time, that was the only way to disseminate information, that or mail. You know, I can remember those days because a client would call and say, "I've got this issue to work on, for you to work on. I'm dropping this contract in the mail. Here are some of the questions I've had." You've had two or three days before the mail arrived, and they didn't expect to get an answer back for a couple of weeks. Now, what does a client do? A client calls and says, "I'm hitting send on the email. Tell me what you think." And I get a 20-page document and I'm supposed to react on the spot, right? Similarly, with electronic communication. So, in the past, if you had communication with another council member and engaged in politicking, which is permissible under the Open Meetings Act, that kind of politicking was done on a one-on-one basis or was done by a telephone call.
Could you just flesh out just a little bit? Because I know we've had MML presentations on that about what's appropriate about, you know, we can't-
Yeah. And I spent most of yesterday writing a long explanation to another client. And let me just talk about the electronic communication. So, the electronic communication now, when you can hit reply all and we can not only disseminate information, but you can essentially engage in dialogue electronically, that's a lot harder to do. I have seen council members or commissioners sit on the dais and text somebody on the other end of the dais. It's inappropriate. It violates the Open Meetings Act because it's deliberation that's occurring out that the public can't observe. I've seen people during meetings texting or emailing people outside of the meeting to ask them what they think about what's going on. Again, it's inappropriate under the Open Meetings Act. Now, if you're talking about the difference between politicking and deliberation, that's going to be a fine line. And in a lot of cases, it's going to depend on the circumstances and what somebody believes the motives are and the intention. So, it's fine to share with another council member, "This is how I'm going to vote on it. This is what I'm thinking." It's fine to ask another council member, "How are you thinking? How are you looking at this issue? What are your concerns and considerations and so forth?" That's all okay. But when you start saying, "I think you ought to do this, and this is why," and you start counting votes, you're probably getting into the point where you're deliberating. So, again, there's a fine line, and how that line gets drawn is going to be, it's going to be drawn on a case-by-case basis, depending on a judge's own views of what is and isn't appropriate and depending a lot on the circumstances. Is it the kind of issue that's really controversial and out in the public and something that the debate ought to be public about, and there are a lot of concerns about deals being made and so forth? Or is it just kind of a routine sort of issue where you're trying to get somebody's perspective on something? It's going to be difficult to draw that line, but soon as you start counting votes, soon as you start trying to lock somebody into their vote, you're probably branching into deliberation. Now, having said that, when you're talking to somebody and you say, "What are you thinking about this?" and so forth, in your mind, you're doing some vote counting because you're trying to figure out where this is going to go and what's going to be done. And you may even get to the point where you say, "Well, how about if we did something like this? Is that something you might think about supporting?" That's probably okay, too. But soon as you get into a lot of other kind of deliberation, you're over the line. Other questions about that before we move on? Generally, what I advise to, I was talking this week with a new commissioner in another community, and this new commissioner was worried because between the time she was elected to the commission and the first of the year, she decided to delete a lot of her Facebook posts, which were fine. That was fine to do because she wasn't yet a public official. But she was concerned because some of the things that she had put on that Facebook post weren't all that complimentary of some other public officials, even some of her fellow commissioners. There was nothing horribly scandalous, but it isn't something, it would have been a little embarrassing had it come out. The rule of thumb I give you is that if whatever you don't want printed on the front page of the free press, don't put in writing. And the corollary to that is assume that every conversation you have is being recorded because people now with cell phones can record anything. See what happened to Mitt Romney with his 47%. And if you want examples of things that go in writing, there are all kinds of examples of what happened with text messages, whether you're talking about Todd Corser or Kwame Kepat.
Excuse me.
Is that the only-
Councilmember Brown.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Could you speak a little about Facebook group chats as well?
I'm not a real social media fan for individual council members. And the reason I'm not is because a lot of times, in fact, let's go to the next slide. That dovetails right into it. As a city official, people perceive you as the city's representative. So, no matter what you do, unless you're very careful in saying, "This is my personal opinion. It's not shared by other council members," people are going to perceive that you're speaking on behalf of the city because you're a city official. And it doesn't matter whether you're in the supermarket line or you're at a church coffee or an athletic event or wherever you encounter somebody, that's what they're going to assume. You can't shed that mantle as long as you're a city official. You know, when you take that oath of office or as a staff member, you accept a city paycheck, you're no longer a private citizen per se. You're also an agent of the city. Now, that doesn't mean you're not entitled to your personal, private opinions and that you can't express those opinions. But it can cause problems to you individually and embarrassment. It can also, because the public will misperceive who you're speaking on behalf of and what you're saying, you should be very careful of that. Yeah.
Thank you. I was actually speaking more of, there's a feature on Facebook where you could be in a group chat. And could you speak to council members being part of those group chats talking about-
No, because the difficulty is that that's going to, particularly if you've got a quorum as part of that group, you're engaging in deliberations at that point. You're effectively having an electronic meeting, although others are also present during that meeting, but you're having an electronic meeting with other council members. So, you've got to be particularly careful if you've got a quorum and so forth. Yeah. It's the same as hitting reply all to a dialogue you're having by email. In excellent communities, the mayor and city manager collaborate on a lot of issues. And that collaboration is really the main point of contact between the council and council politics and city staff, which are non-politics, right? It's, the, importantly, the mayor is directed, or the manager, excuse me, is directed by the council majority, not by the mayor or any other member of council or any subset of council. The manager has to take direction from the council majority. The mayor should have a sense of what the council majority is doing. The mayor should have a sense of how to be fair to the minority on council so that all viewpoints are respected and dealt with. The city manager is to interface with city staff, explaining and supporting the perspective of the council majority. The council should take community politics, should take on the community politics and manage it to avoid having the staff caught in the middle of it. Oftentimes, the, a mayor will set up regular meetings or regular conference calls with the manager and work through it that way. I have a number of clients where I set up a regular conference call with the manager so that I make sure as city attorney, I'm up to speed as what's coming up on the agenda and can provide some guidance from a legal standpoint and so forth. But it's important to have that regular dialogue.
So, just one question. So, Councilmember French and Councilmember Brown and I were on a council subcommittee that, I guess, produced the council rules. And that was one of the things that we were just discussing after we had drafted, kind of a, it popped into our heads after that, was some kind of consultation or between the mayor and manager. Can you provide some insight in how other communities have-
Sure.
Have basically, they have it written down so that it's clear, but then they also have enough flexibility so it's not a thing where the mayor or the manager don't feel, you know-
Well, there's just a practice in other communities. So, one community, the mayor and manager get together. They have a set time at, I think, 2:30 in the afternoon. On Thursday afternoons, they get together. In another community, there's an agenda session where the mayor, the vice mayor, and the manager sit down together a week before the council packet goes together so that they talk about what's coming up, what issues have to be- so that they talk about what's coming up, what issues have to be addressed, whether there's a council perspective on it that the manager needs to know. Sometimes that's helpful in determining exactly what provisions to put in a proposed ordinance, what's going to find acceptance from a majority of the council or not. In some cases, the mayor's in the majority of council on an issue. In some cases, the mayor may be in a minority on an issue, but the mayor and manager try to work through that so that there's an understanding of where a majority of the council is going and they provide that guidance.
And so, I hear what you're saying regarding, it seems kind of like an informal practice.
Yes.
But in, at least for, right now for we are, the, there's kind of two, there's two reasons why I'm asking how, if we wanted to, how we could write it down or how that could be worded. Because one is the matter of the councils that come after us, so they don't have to recreate the wheel. It's something that they can decide to keep or do with, so it's kind of a-
So, you could put it in your council rules.
Yeah.
The way that it's done in most of these communities is it's just that the manager says ahead of time, this is, the manager and mayor at the beginning of the year say, this is the time we're going to set aside and it's put on the manager's calendar. And everybody knows that that meeting is going to occur and it's just an announcement to council and it's an expectation that that communication's going to occur, whether it's- And that allows them, they switch the meeting at times, right? When schedules permit, when the manager's going to be out of town, the mayor's going to be out of town, somebody's got a doctor's appointment, whatever, those things can get rescheduled.
So, even if we said something to the extent that, you know, at the beginning of the year when we, or let's say, actually, it's the previous year, we set a resolution for all our regular meetings. But we could also say, okay, we're authorizing the mayor and manager to set up-
Right.
This and then leave it open.
Yep.
Okay.
It can be done any way you find it best to do it. And, you know, during those meetings, as I said, it's important for the manager to understand where the council's going and for the mayor also to understand what kind of work goes into producing agenda items and so forth. I've got one community where the council doesn't seem to understand that when you say you want this kind of information for the next council meeting, you've really got city staff working forty-five hours between now and the next council meeting to produce some information. It doesn't necessarily fall off of trees. The council should avoid putting staff in the middle of conflicts between council members or differences of opinion between council members. You shouldn't try to engage staff or the manager or your attorney in a situation where they're siding with one group of council members or another. Council members and city staff should support the public policy once it's made. Once a majority of the councils ruled on something, that's the policy until the policy's changed. Now, that doesn't mean that individually you can't advocate for change, but until it's made, that's the policy and you support it. And you support the staff and those who are administering it. Management evaluations and best practices, it's based on specific goals and objectives. And it's fine to have a portion of an evaluation instrument that lists the qualities of the manager, you know, good leader, good communicator and those kinds of things. But the bulk of that evaluation ought to be, did this goal get accomplished or didn't it? And you ought to have concrete goals that you're measuring the manager against. Okay, and in great communities, everybody realizes-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm taking notes.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown.
So, I'm sorry, excuse me. Do you have sample evaluation tools that weight those goals as highly as you recommend?
I can probably find some. But I'm sure the ICMA has some of those, I'm sure MML has some of those and that would be a better source. Your city attorney probably has some too.
Thank you.
You know, words and phrases all mean something. So, in great communities, who's ever designated as the spokesperson, and that could be the mayor, it could be the manager, depending on the issue, should choose those carefully and should communicate well. In great communities, every council member has the same information. So, if one council member asks a question, the answer to that question comes back and is distributed to all council members. Okay, let's see. Okay, let's go to some hypotheticals. So, a citizen seeks a change in snow plowing. Plows go too fast, they go too slow, streets aren't plowed in the right order, there's too much salt, too little salt, whatever. How do you handle that?
I think what tends to happen is if someone bumps into you, a council member in the grocery store, they tell them. If someone's a little bit more savvy, they'll come down or talk to the, you know, the public works director or the manager.
So, if you get that question as a council member, how do you handle it?
I send it to the manager.
Yeah, the best way to do that is unless the manager's directed otherwise, say, here's the number of the manager, please call the manager with that information. Or we have a hotline that the DPW has. If you've got a particular street that needs attention, here's who to call. You know, some cities with potholes, for example, that are springing up this time of year, probably especially with the freeze thaw that we've had in the last week, they have a situation where you can take a picture on your cellphone and type in the location and send it to the DPW and they'll see, click fix, right? Or something like that. But the point is to refer it to the appropriate staff. If the manager wants somebody to call the DPW directly, that's fine. If not, then it should go through the manager's office unless directed otherwise. And Ms. Mitchell, I don't know if you have a particular direction you give on those things or not?
Dr. Mitchell.
Yeah, generally, those will come to me and then I will redirect it to the appropriate staff person. Related to that, we also have a question relative to if the staff can respond directly to the elected officials if there's a specific question.
Well, that depends on what, I usually say that depends on what the manager wants to have happen. The elected officials normally should communicate with staff through you and shouldn't make the direct inquiries because otherwise you put staff in a terrible position. Let's take the snow plowing example. So, the DPW director and your city manager know that there are a couple of icy intersections. They've been called out there to attend to those intersections because we've had a number of accidents. Or they know that there's a traffic situation coming up and so they need to attend to some areas more than others. You don't have all of that information that they've got in real time. And if you call somebody at the DPW and try to give them some direction, you're putting them between a rock and a hard place. Do they follow the direction of the city manager and the DPW director? Or do they follow the direction of the city council member? And that's inappropriate. That's why you work through the city manager to make sure that everybody's getting the same information and treated fairly and then the same way. Okay. A business wants assurance of a city contract. And they may have good reasons for this, right? They may say the city's getting a bad deal now, they may tell you that you should buy local. The business owner may say her business does things better, other businesses unfairly compete. You should give a preference to Michigan businesses or American businesses, whatever. Or you should favor U of M grants. Whatever the reason is.
He's not here.
Laszlo.
Sorry.
Give it to Laszlo.
He's the Michigan State councilman that he said-
I grew up in East Lansing, going to Michigan State football games and I was at U of M when Magic Johnson was playing at Michigan State. So, I, the people at U of M lost a lot of bets because I bet on Magic every time I saw him play in high school. And everybody at U of M at that point said, it's just a flash in the pan, won't amount to anything. They were a little off. Anyway, how do you handle this? Any of these reasons might be valid. So, somebody corners you in the supermarket, somebody comes to a city council meeting and says this, somebody writes a letter, what do you do? How do you handle it?
This strikes me, I mean, obviously, I couldn't speak to it or any of us can speak to it as a, you know, as an official position, but I would think that, I guess in my case, I want to know what policies we have in place regarding, you know, local vendors and those kinds of things. I would talk with the manager, but I guess if this was to turn into a policy, that would go to council.
Yeah. So, if you get that kind of inquiry, what I would do is say, look, the city's got a purchasing policy and procedure and we adhere to that. That policy and procedure is designed and produced so that everybody is on the same footing and understand what that policy is. You can contact the city manager directly to inquire if you think you're not getting notice, you're not on the bid list or whatever, call the city manager and see about doing that. Or you can say, look, you've made some interesting points. I will talk to the rest of my council members and see if we ought to revisit the policy and address some of the issues you raised. You might even say, if you'd be so kind as to put something in writing to me that I could pass on, then I can be more faithful in expressing your concerns and we can make sure that when we have that policy discussion, we understand exactly what you're looking at.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a purchasing, purchasing?
Yes.
Where is it? What is it? What is it?
Well, you've got a policy as to where you, what amount you need, competitive bids and so forth. It's part of your code of ordinances.
Okay.
And some communities do have local preferences. They've got all of those kinds of things cooked in and you can get as detailed as you want. You know, Macomb County's purchasing policies, about that.
So, basically, if I summarize what you're saying, basically, if there's a concern about how the current policy is operating, that's a manager question.
Right. So, if you're concerned you're not getting on the bid list, something like that, please contact the manager. If you want a change in the policy, let me bring it up with my fellow council members. Now, you may want to talk to the manager in between to see if there's a reason we're doing things the way we are. For example, if somebody's complaining about the bids in road projects, if you've got a partial, if you've got a project that's funded in part by MDOT, you've got to go through the MDOT bid procedures and you don't have a lot of choice. You may, CDBG grants often come with designations on how you have to bid those projects. If you've got an airport, there are specific requirements you have to meet under FAA requirements. So, you know, there may be some reasons why particular projects go through a particular bidding process and why you can't give local preferences and do other kinds of things. And so, you might start your inquiry by saying, somebody asked me about this, is there some kind of response? And then direct the city manager or appropriate city staff to get back and explain to that individual why that particular contract is let the way it is.
Okay.
Concerns are raised about police conduct. Sometimes they, too many patrols, too few patrols, sometimes somebody's going to complain about excessive force or handcuffing an eleven-year-old. You might have concerns about police officers being discourteous. You might say that there's bias involving individual neighborhoods, there might be a lack, whatever. Police officers quick-tempered. Recent case, somebody didn't like the way a particular matter was investigated and the conclusion's drawn and it's caused some hardship for one of the parties involved. How do you handle that?
Your city manager.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, again, I think it's important to support your community. So, first thing you have to say is, look, we take law enforcement efforts very seriously. We want to ensure all of our services and interactions are fair, courteous and effective, right? Have you spoken with the police chief? Have you spoken with the city manager? Would you feel comfortable in doing so? I can give you their contact information to make that contact directly.
So, I do have a question. I know this happens sometimes. A resident will have a, a resident will have a concern and they'll say, okay, I'm in precinct X and I have this issue. And the council member might say, okay, well, I'll go with you to talk with or I'll set up a meeting. What's been your experience with those kinds of situations?
It's generally inappropriate to have a council member in that kind of meeting now. If somebody says, I've already talked with the manager or I've already talked with the police chief and the police chief, it would be the other way around. I've already talked with the police chief, I've already talked with the manager and I'm not getting any results, then probably the preferable way to do that is to talk with some of your other council members and see if they have similar kinds of concerns before you interact individually. Because remember, an individual council member has no power and authority. It's the council as a whole that does. So, you ought to be communicating with your fellow council members about it and determining whether something needs to be addressed. Another way to do that is to say, look, if you're afraid to talk with them individually, given the circumstances, or you've already had those individual conversations and you're not happy with the outcome or you don't think the outcome's fair, provide me some details. Again, if you could put some things in writing, that would be helpful to me and I will make an inquiry and then make sure somebody gets back to you appropriately. And then you can inquire of the manager and work through to the police chief and so forth to make sure that that occurs. And you can help decide then, you can ask that there be a report back to you once they've done the investigation or a report back to the council as a whole and say, this is what we determined. Especially in a lot of these police incidents, there are always two sides to the story. And, you know, I think body cams and dashboard cams are some of the best things to happen for police officers because in about ninety, well, close to a hundred percent of the cases I've seen, they come more to verify the officer's version of the events than somebody else's version of the events. It doesn't mean that there aren't officers and that officers don't have a bad day and that sort of thing. I'm not, I've worked with law enforcement enough to know that. A staff member wants to know if she can count on you. Staff member could be a union representative, might want changes in a particular policy or benefit, changes in overtime pay, comp pay, disability leave, whatever, might want a particular result in a grievance or a lawsuit, might want a change in a collective bargaining agreement or whatever, wants help with a proposed early retirement buyout, whatever it may be. How do you address that?
Councilor French.
I would say that without more information, I can't publicly support you until I've got more information. So, we as a body will look at what the contract has to say and make a determination based on the contract and based on a vote of the entire council. One individual cannot be a particular advocate, especially in union contracts. That's not, that's not appropriate, so.
So, you know, I think you're right on there by saying, look, the council acts as a body. I don't have any individual authority. I'm not going to commit on this issue until I hear all sides of it, hear what my fellow council members have to say. Again, if you'd put something in writing to me, I'll send it to the rest of the council members and we'll see what we can do. Or if it's a particular problem that that staff member's having with the city manager, you know, again, put it in writing, I'll talk with, it wouldn't be the city manager, it'd be some other department head probably. I will confer with the city manager and make sure somebody gets back- I will confer with the city manager and make sure somebody gets back to you and follows up appropriately. This one, we, your rules pretty well cover. You've got a public comment that includes personal attacks, maybe against the city manager, maybe against, I've got commissioner in there, should be council member. If the allegations are serious and, and perhaps true, what if the allegations are preposterous? What if there's colorful language used? How do you handle it?
Well, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly where it ought to go. Bang, bang, bang.
I mean, it, it, it has to be, I mean, in, in terms of the first public comment, it has to be on topic, you know, relative to the agenda items, I think that's, that's one way to limit that. There's obviously the gavel there. And then, you know, in the case of there's, you know, foul language, that can, that's another, you know, boundary.
So I, I, I think you use your, your, go ahead.
Councilor Lawler.
So if there is a situation where there's a, a person is out of order, are they to be escorted or do they get a couple of chances to be out of order?
Well, you know, I think you've heard the, the right interaction here. So the mayor would say, look, mister or miss so-and-so, your comments are out of order. I, I understand you feel strongly about this. I understand that you may feel personally invested in it or this is a family member and, and therefore you've got some strong feelings. I, I recognize all of that, but your particular comments and the way you're going about it is out of order and, and we can't have that. If you can redirect your comments in another way, direct them to the mayor and make them less personal and so forth, we'll be happy to deal with it. I can, I will, if, if you want to step outside the room now, we will ask a staff member to step out with you and write down your contact information and some key details. We'll give that to the city manager and somebody will get back with you. The, the idea, I think, is, is to treat the citizen respectfully and so forth. Now, if, if you've got somebody who for one reason or another doesn't seem to want to get redirected or isn't in a mindset to do that, I've had situations where citizens come in and they appear to be under the influence of something or other. I've had a situation just recently in a community where a manager called and asked about that. You may have to have a, a situation where you have an officer or somebody direct somebody out.
That would be the mayor's call?
That would be the mayor's call and, you know, generally you try to avoid that if you can and redirect them generally, you know, if you would have a staff member, somebody say, ma'am or sir, can I kind of redirect you here?
But then also council members can do a point of order and say, I think that's out of order too.
They can do that. In fact, as, as the city attorney, I've done that on occasion. When, when somebody's getting out of order, I will raise a point of order at times and ask the mayor to.
There you go, Colin.
You have concerns about a closed session discussion. Perhaps you've got concerns that have violated the Open Meetings Act. Perhaps you think that the members, the matter should be discussed publicly even if it's properly in a closed session. Perhaps you think that the actions involve violated law or public policy. Perhaps you question whether the information presented was accurate and complete. How do you deal with it?
Ask the attorney.
I, I, I think one thing you do is raise your objections during the closed session. So, you know, I've had situations where you go into closed session to discuss an attorney's opinion and the, the counselor or commission wants to wander off topic a little bit or they want to start deliberations based on that opinion. And at, at times, a, a council member or commissioner, because as the attorney, you're always sitting there and saying, ah, how far is too far? And if, if you're getting uncomfortable as a, as a council member, raise the question at that point and say, I, I think maybe we're getting beyond where we should be in a closed session on this. If, if that doesn't work, then, then ask the city attorney. And if you're not happy with the city attorney's opinion, the, the body could say, well, let's get an opinion of another attorney on this issue.
So one question there, I know there, in, in the past, and it's late, so I can't remember if it's, it's addressed in the council rules, but there are times when the city attorney will provide us with a written opinion on a particular matter. And in the past, there, there have been situations where the council has asked for that. As a body, where individual councils have, individual council members have asked for that, what's the general, your general experience and the best practice for that?
Well, everybody gets it. So everybody gets whatever any council member has, every, every council member gets. Now, are you asking whether they should retain that or turn it back in at the end of the meeting or?
I'm saying more, let's say you have a council member who, who is fond of asking the attorney for written opinions about different issues. And so it's using up the attorney's?
Most, most communities have a procedure set up when they do that. Because they don't want to spend the resources, even if the city attorney's on a retainer, you still don't want to use the city attorney's time needlessly because one council member has an inquiry. Now, at times, that council member will ask a good question and the city manager will then ask the city attorney to provide that information. But generally, in the communities in which I work, it, it would be the council asking for that or the council has designated the mayor or manager to be able to ask for opinions. In some cases, I, I may get a request from a department head for an opinion or advice. In other cases, the manager has said, particularly when they're new managers, I'd like all of that to go through me so I know what's going on. And again, Ms. Mitchell, I don't know if you have?
I have call-in on speed dial, so it doesn't really.
So you get an inquiry from a developer who wants full support for a project, wants help with the zoning approvals, wants lower utility connections, you can read the list, wants an easement on adjoining city property. How do you deal with it?
Hypothetical five.
Yeah. It, it's a lot the same way. Look, we've, we've got procedures set up to ensure everyone is treated fairly. We have to ensure due process, fairness, independence of the bodies. I suggest you contact the city manager if you have specific concerns about how the process has been implemented. And, you know, if you think the process ought to be different, then again, reduce your request to writing. I'll pass it on to other council members and we'll see if we ought to change the process.
Councilor Brown.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Hypothetically, what if a developer approaches the city manager?
Well, I would assume developers will be approaching a city manager from time to time. And, and many times, developers are coming to the city and having questions about stuff they're not ready to go public with. So they can't stand up and share it with you all. They may have discussions with the manager saying, this is what I'm looking to do, what do you think? What would be the process? How could I get this done? Can you get me a preliminary read about how the zoning department or somebody would, would react to this? Not knowing all of the details and so forth. And, you know, if you're going to do economic development from time to time, you're going to get those kinds of inquiries. You, you may have an Amazon or somebody else coming to you and saying, I want to do this, but you've got to keep it super secret.
And, and I, and I think part of it is, just, just to be frank, I think sometimes there's a, especially in our community, there could be an anxiety about not knowing. And so in, in that, you know, silence there, that's filled a lot of times with, you know, rumors or people, you know, having an imagination. But I think, what I would say is, I guess to add on to what Councilor French is saying is, so we, it's referred to the manager, but then if, even from as council members, so that we're kept abreast of things, I think that's where that, that's.
The manager ought to share whatever the manager can share in that situation. So if the manager's approached by somebody and says, this is what I'm thinking of doing, so forth and so on, the manager might send out, I, I don't know, I'm assuming you send out weekly communications or memos or bi-weekly or something. You, you might say, look, I had an inquiry about such and such a parcel, it looks like an interesting project. I've been told I can't say anything else at this time. As soon as I have more information and can pass it on, I will. And, and by doing that, you know that the inquiry's been made, you know that there's something going on, you know that she's kind of sworn to secrecy at this point, but you also have the assurance that when she's able to provide more information, she will. Okay?
Councilor Spies.
Anything to add, it looked like you were?
No.
Okay.
Good question. So then it is, in your opinion, conducive for a good working relationship between the manager and council that nothing ever be hidden or withheld from each one?
Well, all, all council members ought to, if any council member has some information, all council members ought to get that information. Occasionally, the manager and mayor may share some things back and forth on a preliminary basis that not all of the council's going to be able to have. So the, the manager may say, look, I know I've got a police issue that somebody needs to know about. I'm going to make sure that at least one elected official is informed of that. We can't go public with it because it's real sensitive at this point. There's an ongoing investigation, whatever it might be, but I want to make sure that, that one elected official is informed. That, that's fine on a case-by-case basis. Generally, what ought to happen is if one council member, including the mayor, has information, the same information ought to be available to all council members. Okay? Again, there may be specific instances where you can't do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So you believe that there are some official statements that are inaccurate or incomplete. Maybe a city spokesperson hasn't fully disclosed all of the details you think ought to be disclosed. You, you might think that, you know, that, that the official statement should have been better or different. What do you do? Yeah, I, I think you talk with whoever the spokesperson is, the city manager or mayor, and say, look, I have some concerns about this, do you think that put our best foot forward? What do you think, should some follow-up occur? If you don't get satisfaction with that, discuss it with your other council members, discuss it with your city attorney, whatever you need to do at that point. Particularly if you're concerned about liability issues, why make sure the city attorney's included in that discussion early? But better to talk with the mayor or manager first and, and try to work through the issue. This one we've really dealt with, so I'll just pass over that. This one, we've, we've kind of dealt with too, so I don't need to deal with that. I can take questions, I can go over the questions you all asked if I haven't answered some of those. I know that there was a question regarding charter revision and charter amendments. And I, I can also go through specific questions. There was a reference to the National Civic League's model city charter. And, and let me just read to you an excerpt from one of the comments to that city charter. In discussing a council-manager plan of government, "The duties of a non-executive mayor are entirely consistent with the council-manager plan. The office is quite different from that of an elected chief executive in a system that separates executive and legislative powers." So it's quite different than the governor, it's quite different than county executive hackle in Macomb County, which I'm pretty familiar. And rather, the mayor in the council-manager form is the chief legislator. The leader of the policymaking team, and that's what the council is. This mayor can be a strong mayor who, not having to overcome the offsetting power of the council or not being bogged down by the details of managing the city staff, can focus on facilitative leadership. And that's what I'm trying to describe here, a facilitative leadership style where the manager facilitates the, the conversation between the staff and the council and, and facilitates communications with the community. The mayor's effective by helping the council and staff perform better. High involvement by the council and the manager and construction, constructive relationships among officials are indicators of successful leadership by the mayor. And then it says, "The new model also specifically addresses the importance of strong political leadership and the potential for such leadership by the ma- mayor in the council-manager cities." This is based on three premises. First, relationships among officials in council-manager cities are cooperative rather than contentious because powers are not divided among officials. Second, this approach to mayoral leadership stresses the contribution of all officials rather than focusing on the mayor as the driving force of city government. So all of you are involved in, in driving the vision. Third, the potential for mayoral leadership is inherent in the council-management form so long as the office is not actually hamstrung by arbitrary limitations. The mayor occupies a strategic location shaped by his or her close relationships with the council, manager and individual citizens and groups in the community. So this goes to what the mayor was talking about, about, on, on those policy issues, making sure that key stakeholders feel free to have dialogue. The mayor is able to provide communications among officials and with the public and so forth. So if you look at it, you've got, there's a lot of things that describe what this role is. Okay? There are other questions, like who drives the vision for the city? You know, so, you know, I'm going to say, who are the visionaries? I've served on a lot of boards and I've served, watched a lot of boards and I'm going to tell you that those who are truly visionaries are, are a very small subset of a body. A visionary, you, you know the kind of person I'm talking about, right? The, the, the kind of person who sees the blank canvas or the block of stone and sees David, right? The, the, the person who sees an empty lot and envisions the Taj Mahal. Those are the kind, those are the kind of people that are visionaries. Fewer have the ability to see the vision and see the steps to implement it. Fewer have the ability to articulate the vision. So there are people that can see a vision but can't explain it or get people behind it. So the, the question is, anytime you're looking at it, is who are the visionaries? And make sure you as a group identify who those are and help them create and articulate the vision in a way that everybody can get behind. Sometimes that's the mayor, sometimes that's the manager, sometimes it's another council person. So I've, in one community in which I'm working, it's another council person altogether who's the visionary and the mayor and manager are smart enough to rely on that person to help set the vision for the community. There were questions about the level of, of the manager and involvement in council debate. The charter allows the full manager involvement in discussion but not voting. Most managements set things up with a recommend, most managers set things up with a recommendation, then sit and wait for council direction after council deliberation. They will pipe in to provide added information or clarify things, but let the council engage in the deliberation or the debate. So most managers tee it up, provide you the information and then sit back and watch much of the deliberations occur. How should the mayor, council and manager interreact? I think we've gone through that. How is the manager held accountable? Again, we've, we've gone through that, the, the evaluation. Again, we've gone through that, the evaluation, the feedback, and regular reports. And I'm going to tell you that praise ought to be public. Criticism, to the extent possible, should be private. So, you know, if you've got criticisms or concerns, to the extent possible, pass those on to the mayor for the mayor to talk with the manager about and to try to work out how those are going to be addressed. Do it during evaluation times. The Open Meetings Act allows you to go into closed session for those evaluations. There are times when, you know, you have to have public criticism, but very few. And the other ways they interreact is there shouldn't be surprises either way. So, the manager shouldn't be surprised by council reaction when a matter's brought before the council, and the council shouldn't be surprised by staff reaction when it decides something and staff is concerned about that or it costs you more than you think or whatever. You ought to have objective reviews of major projects, incidents, and events. So, if there's a... If you had a major snowfall, I've seen communities that after... Well, a good example is the windstorm that they had in Grand Haven a year or so ago where they had 130 mile an hour winds, and the community had 200 trees down, and there was... So, after that was over, a few months later, they had a review of that event, and what did we do well? What can we do better? How are we going to change the way we do things to be better prepared in the future? There are communities that have major community-wide events, festivals or whatever, and they will have a debrief after that. So, Grand Rapids does that after Art Prize every year, for example. They sit down with the Art Prize sponsors and other major stakeholders, and they do a half-day debrief where they say, what went well? What didn't go so well? So, the community has the kind of debrief and interaction, and it's done in a way that's not personal at all. So, you know, we get to it, and we look at it. We've talked about codes of conduct, the ICMA code of conduct. You've got council rules in your packet. I included the Battle Creek Ethics Ordinance. There's also a sample from the city of Sagatuck, and there are a number of other ethics ordinances. Battle Creeks is pretty good in terms of council conduct and council-manager interreaction, so, inner relationship. So, you know, I would counsel you to look at that or suggest that you look at that one. Let's see. Let's talk about charter revision or amendment. So, I work with communities of all kinds of charters. Grand Rapids has a charter that was written in 1907, and a few things have changed since 1907. Very few communities have a charter written within the last 10 or 15 years. So, most communities have charters that have gender presumptions that are inappropriate. Most charters have provisions that apply... Talk about constables, or they talk about appointing the county supervisors. There aren't even... County supervisors don't even exist, and they're not... They're not elected by city governments anymore. A lot of them have municipal courts that don't any longer exist, and you just ignore that stuff. It's all been superseded by state law. A lot of charters have provisions regarding the timing of nominating petitions and other kinds of things that have also been superseded by the Michigan election law. That's fine. That's just superseded, and you don't have that problem. There are communities that want to address things in their charter. I worked with one community that has a list of about 20 items, and they're knocking it off three, sometimes four items at a time, in election after election after election, trying to get the charter cleaned up. So, you can do it through a series of amendments. What you can't do by an amendment is to change the basic form of government or do something that is so massive in terms of its effect on the language in the charter. You can't do that through a simple amendment. That would require a revision. The amendment process, you all control to a large extent. You determine what issues go before the voters. You determine the specific wording. There are a lot of advantages to that. On the other hand, you can't accomplish a major change in the charter through an amendment process unless you're very patient over a series of elections. The difficulty with a revision is you could end up with something that is a massive change and/or significant changes over which you have no control. So, you could end up with term limits or the elimination of term limits. You could end up with a strong mayor form of government. It could change your districts. It could impose a lower millage limitation and deprive you of funds. It could limit the numbers of personnel, and it could otherwise curb or hamper your powers. So, when you open it up for a charter revision, there's a charter commission that ends up being elected, and you don't have any control over the work product they come up with. How many amendments before revision? You can do as many amendments as you want as long as you're not... No amendment is so drastic a change that it results in a revision. Where that line is, I don't know. You'll see the courts have judged that in a number of different places, and you'll see in the outline some reference to a couple of the court cases. Again, your city attorney's probably right up to speed on all of that and has access to the same information that I have. Okay? Are there other questions that people have that I didn't answer?
And I guess one question I have, I guess for maybe like a public education form. So, we're aware of this. We have MML trainings. A number of us have been on council for years, and so we're familiar with that. But in other communities, what have you seen the council or the administration do to kind of bring residents up to speed about, you know, who do you go to or what... So, they can be...
Communities do that in a variety of ways. So, some communities send out newsletters as part of water and sewer billings, or they'll include a newsletter that has FAQs or something in it if I have a question about. A lot of communities are doing a lot of that information on the website. Some, if they have a PEG channel that's available on the cable TV, will do it through the PEG channel. Some have... They use Facebook, or they use Twitter effectively to communicate city information, and will get out city information in that kind of way. In fact, I've seen those kinds of social media approaches used very effectively following a snowstorm or other natural event where the public may have a number of questions about, what do I do? How do I handle this? I've got all kinds of downed trees in my yard. If somebody can come through and pick up the brush, whatever it may be. So, there are a variety of different ways you can get the information out to the public. Part of what you have to do, though, is to make sure everybody's staying on message and chooses to use the same phrasing and so forth. So, again, it comes back to carefully shaping the message and making sure that it's used consistently by everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Counselor French.
So, I had asked a question about the relationship between the mayor and the Economic Development Corporation Director.
Yeah. So, and thanks. I didn't get to that. So, the Economic Development Corporation Director is an appointment, or the Economic Development Corporation board members are appointed by the mayor with the consent of the council. The Economic Development Corporation Director is responsible to the board of that separate public body, corporate, not to the city. Now, having said that, there are all kinds of interesting relationships there. So, in some communities, the director of the EDC is also a member of city staff. Sometimes the city planner, sometimes the deputy city manager, and there may be some other kinds of relationships there where they're wearing more than one hat. And if that's the case, you know, they've got accountability going both ways. They sort of have two masters at that point, and... But still, it would be, at that point, if they're also a member of the city staff, then they're accountable through the city manager's office and back to the council, not to the mayor, because the mayor's only one council member. So, the mayor and those kinds of interactions with those other bodies should be reflecting, again, the policy and views of the majority of the council.
I do have one... Another question. So, just wanted to make sure. I know, well, for example, when we did have a... Well, a school board, when the Alvin Brothers Schools was here, they had a... The school board had a practice where they'd have an initial meeting where they had a basically a work session, study session, to set the agenda, a committee of the whole kind of thing. And then, once they got to the next meeting, they just voted and did the official business. We have two regular meetings. We have agendas for those, and I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So, in terms of setting the agenda, in a situation where we do not have meetings, like it's pre-meetings to set the agendas...
Well, we could.
Yeah, but that'd be... But I guess...
Between mayor and council.
So, that's my question, is that acceptable? I mean, you say, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. It's acceptable to have that kind of consultation or meeting with the mayor, mayor pro tem, manager before to set the agendas?
Right. Again, in most communities, I see that. Either the mayor and the manager meet, or the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and the manager meet. You might have the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the manager, and the assistant manager, or the clerk, or somebody else in that meeting. And there should be an exchange of ideas, okay? What do we see coming up on the agenda? What do I advise be put on the agenda or not? And why? And so, there aren't any kind of surprises. You ought to have that dialogue and that trusting relationship going back and forth that you know that you've got everybody's back. You know, I was telling somebody recently that when a law firm I was with a number of years ago was approached by a larger law firm to merge, and then the partnership split 50-50. And half of the partners went to the new firm, half stayed, and there were some hard feelings about that, as you can imagine. And there were people seeing conspiracies and imputing motives and all kinds of things. And I just said at the time, I'm going to decide that everybody involved in this is doing what they think is in the best interest of the group they're staying with or going with. And by doing that and assuming that everybody was looking at the best interest of their particular community, it was tremendously freeing. So, you know, if you look at it and approach it in that kind of fashion, that everybody's doing what's in the best interest of the community, that's going to provide the kind of ongoing dialogue and input that you need to have on agenda item issues and other kinds of things. And if you trust that... Assume that your mayor is also accurately representing the views of all council members and that your city manager's also actively representing the views of all staff members and is also trying to take the direction of all the council, you have a good collaborative working relationship. That's what happens in dynamic kinds of communities now. From time to time, there's going to be stress in that, right? Because if you have strong leaders, they are going to have differences of opinion and perhaps even differences in how they approach the dialogue and discussion. Their personalities aren't always going to mesh well. So, you're going to... There's going to be a certain tension there, too. That's not bad. You just have to work your way through that kind of thing.
So, I think, and just to go straight at it, I think what you're saying there is, so, each of us, and I've said it to a couple of council members, a couple of the council or a number of the council members, is if you ran for council and didn't have an agenda or a goal or anything, then that's probably a bad thing. So, but if I was a citizen and I saw, had a concern about, you know, issues in the community, I said, okay, we need to take certain steps to develop the community, you know, we need to solve these problems, and I run, and, you know, whether it's mayor or council, I'm elected. And you say, okay, like you've said, you advocate for a policy. And then, what is interesting, and I wrote that down, like you said, you know, ordinances, resolutions, budget priorities, contracts, goals, board appointments, borrowing, all of that, those are all exercises of policymaking. So, let's say the council says, I'm going to... When it comes time for an EDC appointment or a planning commission appointment, I'm going to say, okay, I'm going to appoint someone or individuals in the community with expertise or whatever who are uniquely talented or skilled to address a particular need. Okay? So, that policymaking is happening in a certain... With a certain priority. But then, what happens is, and this is kind of the context, there was a local resident hosted, like a mini-town hall. It was a very interesting conversation. That's where that visionary question came up. It was a local businessperson, and he said, well, you know, I run a business. I'm used to business practices, and I look at, you know, Apple or Amazon and Steve Jobs or Jeff Bezos, and they basically provide this kind of visionary force to get something done. Who's doing that in the city? And I think you've answered that. But the question that happens is, if, you know, through boards or different developers or different organizations, you know, there's a... There's a certain agenda or push there, and then you have amongst, let's say, a majority of the council or the mayor in appointments, a push in another direction, or not even another direction, but just trying to do more. How have you seen communities handle that? Which is to say, I don't oppose one agenda, but I do want to make sure that other concerns are raised or addressed.
And that's... That's a difficulty that you all are going to have.
Yeah.
Okay? And you're going to have that a lot. You're the board that oversees everything that occurs and gets done or gets influenced by city government. You will have people who are strong... Feel very strongly about a particular issue. They may be historic preservationists. They may be tree huggers. They may be people that want to have recreation programs. They may be folks that are strong law enforcement. They may think firefighters need better equipment. Just anything. And the people involved in that task or that group, if you talk to a planner and a planning commission, you know, they think what they do is the most important thing. I once had a partner who was a labor lawyer, and says, labor law is the most important thing your community's going to do. I'm thinking to myself, come on. That's a part of what they do, but not the most important thing. What you have to do is balance all of those things and look at the resources that you have available to do that. And it's not just the financial resources, but it's the staffing resources because your administrative staff can't do 100 things at the same time and do them well. So, you have to prioritize. You have to decide among all of these competing things what's going to get the attention in what order and how much of your resources are going to be allocated to it when. So, you can tell somebody who comes to you with that vision, that's a great vision. In looking at our capital improvement plan over the next five years, I don't see that identified any... I don't see that identified any place, and nor do I see the ability to rejigger our capital improvement plan, because we have so many priorities that are a level 10 that I can't deal with the level five ones. You've got a very laudable project. Maybe you ought to see whether the philanthropic community or somebody else will begin to raise funds for that. Maybe at that point, I could come up with some matching funds. Or if your vision's that dynamic, why don't you come present to the whole council and see if council will salute that vision?
So, so.
And that's, that's what they did with Art Prize in Grand Rapids, for example. There was somebody who had the funds, they happened to be divorced, it helped.
Yeah.
But, but they had the funds, and they set the vision in a very way, and they got, they got the whole community behind it.
Okay.
Okay, so sometimes the visionaries also come from outside of city hall. Not all of the time are your visionaries in city hall. The, the key is to identify who those visionaries are, and then try to get people behind a vision.
Councilmember Lawler and councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have any suggestions on, I had a question raised to me about our city manager and our mayor getting together like once a week. Do you have any like suggestions that, how can the council make sure that, you know, they're communicating or engaging in conversation on a weekly basis? Or anything like that?
Well, the council could ask both the mayor and the manager for a report on what's happened during those meetings and those dialogues. Report to council on what you've talked about and what kinds of things you've come up with. They could generate a memo at the end of those meetings. These are the, these, this is when we met, this is how long we met, these were the issues we discussed. Here are the issues we agreed that we're going to have to discuss more before they're ready to go to council. Here are the issues that we see coming to council in the next month or whenever they're going to come.
So we can, we can ask like on a weekly basis?
Sure, because, because the charter says in both cases that they both have such tasks or responsibilities as you may assign them.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one way that that could occur.
Councilmember French.
That was my question.
Oh, okay.
So we can ask on a weekly basis?
Well, you could, you could adopt a resolution or a motion. You know, probably the way I would start is say, Mr. Mayor, Madam City Manager, can, would you be so kind as to, at our next council meeting, provide us a list of dates and times when you're anticipating meetings so that we know when we have to interact with you prior to that? And would you be so kind as to provide us a brief summary of what's occurred at those meetings? Just a bullet pointed list that's half a page or something. May give you enough to know that, to give you the assurance that you feel you want to, that those have occurred. Okay? And, you know, you can direct it more formally if you want, but you can also be relatively informal and see how that might work. And again, most of these things, it, it's, every time there's a new mayor, every time there's a new manager, every time the manager has a change in staff, every time council members change, there's also going to be a certain adjustment period. And as you come up with a new way of interacting and a new way of doing things, don't expect it's going to work out. Everybody's going to have all of the kinks work out at the beginning. It's going to take a while for that rhythm, that harmony, that way of interacting to work its way through and for you to see the fruits of it. It's going to be awkward at first, probably.
Thank you.
There any other questions? Other questions from council? Oh, so the one question I did add, so the, and then we're getting close, so. So you mentioned it, that you read it, but like, in those situations where there is no policy, so one thing I can think of is, we haven't done this in council rules, we talked about it. This meeting's televised, it's recorded, and it's going to be put on YouTube. But there's no policy about which meetings are recorded, which meetings are not recorded. When we encounter those situations, what's the best way to, to, to deal with that? Because one of the other issues is, there was a, a month or so ago, a month and a half, there was a request by a resident to switch the venue of the council meeting. And the charter really doesn't, it says we can do it, but it doesn't say how we can do it. And obviously, we can't deliberate over email about a venue change. So that, that probably could be put in council rules.
And I've seen that in council rules in a, in a number of communities where they say, look, the venue may be changed for any meeting if it appears that, given the subject matter, the crowd is, is going to be more than can be accommodated in the council chambers. And you do that by putting a note on the council door and also letting people know ahead of time and so forth. And there are ways that that can be done, and you can delegate who gets to make that judgment call, whether it's the manager, or the mayor, or a couple of council members, or whatever. You can also set it, and those things can occur. If you had a power outage in city hall, you might have to do that, too. Or like happened in Grand Rapids a couple of weeks ago when the, when the steam utility had an explosion, and at least in my office, it was about 40 degrees all day. So you, you may have those kinds of, of situations. You also asked, or somebody asked, what happens if between council meetings somebody needs to make a judgment call on something? You know, if it requires council action to decide an issue, it requires council action to decide the issue. No subset of council can, can do that. Now, you may be able to, to delegate to somebody. For example, Mount Pleasant does this every year. They cancel their second meeting in December usually because they decide nobody wants to come during Christmas week and have a commission meeting. And what they'll do is they'll delegate that the bills can all be paid, and then they'll be ratified the next year, and empower the city finance director to pay the routine bills. So you can do those kinds of things on an ad hoc basis. Otherwise, if you may in your purchasing policy, set up emergency purchasing powers so that if you need to get a generator in here because there's a power outage and you need to do something, somebody could spend $50,000 or $100,000 in an emergency situation, make that purchase and come back and get it ratified later. So there are ways to, the foreseeable things to get accomplished. Otherwise, if it requires council action, it requires council action. And if you need that action before the next council meeting, then call a special meeting and get a quorum there to, to address that issue.
This is my last question. Really? Okay.
I've got one, but you don't.
Oh, okay. So, you know, I've been on council for seven years, and I've worked with three city managers. And one of the things, and I, you know, I'm sure you know Eleanor Seaworth. She's like a facilitator with MML, former mayor of Birmingham. So, and I asked her this, too. It's, you know, there have been times when I've, I've felt as if the period of time I had to make a decision to do the resource check on a, you know, a particular upcoming agenda item was, you know, very short. And that always kind of made me nervous. In other communities, what, is that a concern that you've seen? And then what have they done to make sure? I mean, obviously, there's sometimes you're going to have an emergency ordinance, an emergency purchase, those kinds of things. But what kinds of things can we do, or have you seen communities do, or council people do, to alleviate that feeling of?
There are a variety of things that are done. So on, on some things, the manager will have a part of the manager's report that's part of the council agenda packet that says, look, these are the upcoming items I see coming up over the next couple of months. Anybody has any questions or concerns, let me know. That's why you get agenda packets ahead of time, so you have an opportunity to study all of those things and make sure you come to those meetings prepared. If you get the agenda packets ahead of time, in most communities, their individual council members will make, will send emails to the manager and says, look, I have this question on this agenda item, can you address this? And, and the manager having that ahead of time can either then send out an email reply to all council members saying, this question was asked about the agenda. Here's the answer and the additional information you need. Or at the very least, can come prepared at the meeting to address that question and provide you the additional information. In some cases, with ordinances and so forth, a lot of councils have a practice, no ordinance is ever going to be adopted at the meeting in which it's introduced. Some say that with respect to certain other items. Some require that, they have committees that will address an issue. So if you're talking about the purchase of property or the sale of property, they'll have a property committee that looks at it on behalf of the council and will give some initial feedback and inform the rest of council as needed. So some councils work through a committee structure where they, those committees will act at least on major issues.
Our charter bans any, oh, we can have.
Yeah, we can have ad hoc committees.
Ad hoc, not standing.
You can have ad hoc committees. So, you know, there are some issues. I've worked with communities on non-discrimination ordinances. I've worked with communities on medical marijuana now. And there are some issues that are big enough and broad enough and involve enough community concern that council kind of adopts a process that they're going to go through to consider that major initiative. And will say, okay, we're going to have a series of work sessions where we discuss subcomponents of this and work through it. And that might be just a work session component of a meeting where we say, on this issue, we're going to have a discussion, but we're not going to make any decision at this meeting, it's just going to be a discussion or study item.
Thank you. Councilmember French.
Thank you. Just in response to that question, the issue about timely decisions in the last year have centered on grant proposals where the city has been asked to be fiduciary, providing some minimal 10%, 15% matching for a larger project. We get the packet on Thursday or Friday, and we make a decision on Monday. And what we don't have in those moments is time, because the deadline is the day after the council meeting, et cetera. The way I work is, I read the packet, I call the city manager, ask questions, might call a council person to see how they're thinking, but, but I'm able to make that decision. And, and others are not able to make that decision. And so that, I think, is the concern that we have, is that sometimes these things happen, and we have to make a decision, and there are people who don't make decisions quickly. And that's fine. It's just how do we, and I think we addressed that in our council rules, because we've now said in our council rules that agenda items need to be in now 10 days before the council meeting, so that council, the city manager can prepare information and documentation to prepare, which could then give us even more time to evaluate things, ask questions, and the city manager get information so that decision can be made quickly.
There, there are times when staff doesn't have the ability to do that. So I've had situations, for instance, where the MDEQ is involved in some concerns about a wastewater treatment plant or something like that, and they get back, and the MDEQ's been looking at something for 180 days, and they get back and say, okay, you've got three days now to approve this. So there are times when the city as a whole gets backed into a corner because of actions of another agency, or you might have a private developer that says, I need a decision on this now. In some cases, you just say, okay, I can't make the decision that quickly, sorry. In, in other cases, you've got, if you're looking at grants, for example, oftentimes when the grant application goes in, you know what some of the expectations are going to be. So you have time at, at that point to flesh out some things. Sometimes you'll drop a project on the city manager and say, this is a project, go find some grant funds. She'll do some looking or some exploration and said, okay, I got two weeks to get in a grant application to meet this cycle of grant funding. I don't have a lot more time than that. But oftentimes, you, you can, particularly if you're having the dialogue between the manager and the mayor, they'll know what kinds of things are going to come to your agenda, and what kinds of things might cause you some angst or concern. Sometimes there's information that can be given out ahead of time. Even if I don't have that grant agreement, I know, because I've gotten the grant award, I don't have the grant agreement to approve yet, but I can give you the, the monetary terms of the grant, the deal terms, right? And so sometimes you have the deal terms, even if you don't have the exact contract to look at, and, and you can look at those kinds of things. But the key is to have some communication, and I think what you're expressing is saying, look, as council members, I'd like more than four days on issues where we're committing significant public funds. Or if you've got an airport, it's not even the public funds, because they're all, it, it, those grants are 90% federal, 5% state, and 5% local match, so it looks like a small amount, except you're making a commitment to keep that airport open as a public airport for 20 years, right? So it's the commitment on the other end of some of those things that's even bigger. You look at some of the COPS grants that they gave where it was great because they fully funded it for two or three years. But then after that, you had an obligation to fund it, to self-fund for a period of time. So it was those kinds of things that, yeah, I remember some of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lawler.
Under the mayor, outline pages four and five, it says, under the mayor, emergency powers under law. Can you give me an example?
State law simply gives the, in, in terms of the Emergency Management Act, it says that the mayor can declare emergencies. No other city official has that ability. Now, the mayor might not be the emergency manager, you can delegate that to somebody else. But there are certain powers in the Emergency Management Act that are delegated specifically to the mayor or chief executive officer that the manager doesn't exercise at that point. So, and, and, you know, you can look at, I can give you more of a list out of the statute, but again, your, your city attorney is aware of those.
Okay. Seeing no further questions from council, I want to thank you so much for coming down and for the, really appreciate it. At this time, is there any public, general public comment? We ask that if you address the council, you keep it to three minutes and observe proper decorum. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Oh, and please state your, your name and address.
Lobe, Dwyer, 917 Luther Jive. I just have a quick question. I've seen Christmas trees around. Was, is the city picking them up, or is individuals responsible for them? Or what's happening with the Christmas trees?
Are there, are there any other, are there any further public comments this evening?
Mike Bearman, 1101, 629 Mile Road. This was very informative tonight. I really liked what came out of it. And I thought he was spot on in just what, in everything he said. I really liked it. Couple of things to also remember is be consistent, because sometimes we're not consistent in what we do. We always have to be consistent and pay attention to not guaranteeing something else that we can't guarantee to anybody. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further public comment this evening? Okay. Seeing none, the Christmas tree? tree?
In response to the inquiry relative to the Christmas trees, the city has been having our crews pick up the trees as staff time permits. Also, residents are, I believe they can take them to the tree dump. I'll, I'll confirm those available hours.
Thank you. I'd ask for a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.